This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, October the 11th. Please stand for our invocation. They're by Pastor Christopher Williams, Yorktown Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come once again to say thank you. We come asking God your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you govern our hearts and our minds. Bless each council person. Give them wisdom and courage to do what is best for this city. And then, Lord, bless all the citizens and all of us. Forgive us for our sins and wrongdoings. We ask these things in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Roquan, President Small, Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Jones. Statement of Rules.
Good morning, everybody. If you were wondering, we are too short of our colleagues today, so two people are missing. So there's only five of us. And as a gentle reminder to my colleagues, since there are only five of us, if you have any problems with any of the issues before us this morning, you might want to speak now because it takes five votes to pass things. So just wanting to remind you of that. Anyway, the Statement of Rules this morning, if you would all please turn off your electronic devices. We ask also that everybody who desires to address the council, that you have already signed in at the door indicating the resolution or ordinance, appeal, public hearing that you intend to speak about. Anyone who speaks to non-agenda items should have already signed in by Thursday at 2:00. Each speaker gets three minutes to address the council. You'll hear a bell indicating the end of your first two minutes. Then the bell will ring again at one minute. When you address the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member, and all statements are to be made to the chair, that is me. To maintain decorum, we also will not allow any undue applause or public outcry. Those are the rules, and we ask you to please respect those rules of the council. Ms. Lambert?
Approval of Minutes of October 4th.
Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office.
So the mayor was unable to attend this morning, so I'll be making comments on his behalf. I'll begin with the final voyage of the ecstasy. Nearly 2,000 visitors arrived in Mobile yesterday morning to participate in Carnival Ecstasy's final voyage. Representatives from Carnival were on hand to celebrate ecstasy's 31 years of service and 5.5 million passengers who have sailed on her over the years. We are already laying the groundwork to welcome the newer, larger Carnival Spirit in October of 2023. With the new ship, we will no longer compete with nearby ports like New Orleans or Tampa, which are homes to other Fantasy Class ships. Our staff is already collaborating with marketing teams at Visit Mobile and Carnival to make sure that Spirit's cruise is out of Mobile or full. Though we won't have a ship in the harbor temporarily, our staff is already working to line up events and attractions to help us get the most out of the Alabama Cruise Terminal during the time that we do not have a ship in port. We are also diligently searching for a second cruise ship that could potentially use the terminal during the times that the Carnival Spirit is not in port. Our relationship with Carnival is strong, and the mayor believes that we have an opportunity to continue to grow Mobile's reputation in the cruise industry at large. This is also Fire Prevention Week. This marks the 100th anniversary of the Fire Prevention Week. Mobile Fire Rescue Department is holding a Fire and Life Safety Expo this Friday, October the 14th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. The event will take place at Municipal Park and is free to the whole family. The event will include rope rappelling, vehicle extraction demonstrations, fire truck rides, house burn simulations, EMS demonstrations, and more. As for Art Walk this Friday, we will be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with Mobile Latin Fest taking place over at Cathedral Square. There will be plenty of local artists selling their goods in restaurants, and bars will be serving up crowds of pleasant dishes. Also, this is the last Roll Mobile of the season. Art Walk is from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Hope to see you there. There are also Market in the Park. Fall is in the air, and that means that it's time for Market in the Park. Saturday, starting this Saturday, October 15th. Stop by Cathedral Square in downtown Mobile on Saturday between 7:30 a.m. and noon to shop local produce and seasonal items from local farmers and vendors. At this point, I'll turn it over to Jim Delap, who will recognize Employee of the Month from Public Works, Parks, and Recreation.
Morning. If I can have Mark and Carl come down and join me. We'll start with our Public Services awardee. And let me leave this here. And that, that's... I'm going to let Mark talk about Mr. Clayton.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Again, I think I'll say this every time I come up here and talk. This is definitely a highlight of the job I get to do is recognize outstanding employees. I have not been able to, again, meet personally with every of the 250 employees in Public Services, but just, and I haven't been able to meet Carl personally and talk to him until today, but clearly, after talking with about 15 minutes, I understand why he was nominated and voted to receive this award. I have a whole bunch of great things in here that his peers said about him, but clearly, his number one trait is that he cares about the people he works with, and he wants to make the place better than how he arrived. So he's continually trying to do that. And when he walks in the room, folks light up because they know it's going to be a good day. So I really just wanted to thank Carl for all the great work with this award. And I think he wanted to say thank you all.
To the council and to the mayor, all those in authority. I'm honored to be chosen as the Employee of the Month to represent the city of Mobile. Actually, this was my first job as a teenager, a summer job. And I've seen this city evolve. And I know that with godly leadership and wise counsel, that Mobile is becoming a hub for the South. You know, it's going to be a place to be on the Gulf Coast.
Okay. Next, I'm going to have Dan Otto come down from Parks and Rec, and Dan's going to talk about our Parks and Rec employee, Ms. Denise Ellison, in our Parks Maintenance.
Good morning. Although she wasn't nominated by her peers, I work with Denise on a daily basis, so I have direct knowledge of her work and her value to the department. Denise Sacks is our office manager, where she handles too many duties to list. She is conscientious and capable, and because of this, she is often the go-to person when there are questions about procedures. In the rare case that she doesn't have an answer, she will make a point of finding one. We are fortunate to have Denise in our department. It is my pleasure to recognize her as Employee of the Month.
I'd just like to say thank you for this honor, and I'm a very proud employee of the city of Mobile, and it takes the team to get me where I am. And I couldn't do it without the support of Dan Otto. Thank you.
Finally, I'll have Chris come down and talk about our Employee of the Month from our Public Works at Large, Mr. Terry Reed.
Good morning, everyone. It's great that we recognize all these employees. You know, I've been with the city quite a few years too, and I've seen the city grow. It's a privilege for me to work here. The city is a great place to work. And, you know, things aren't perfect, but life's not perfect. But it's a great, it's a great place to work. And recognizing employees is a great thing because it just helps morale. And it just recognizes people that normally, you know, just go on their routine without being acknowledged. Terry, you know, every department, every employee has a role. And it's very important that they do their job well for the city to look good, for the citizens, just to keep a positive, you know, image of the city. Terry's job is roof. And the city has a lot of facilities, a lot of roofs. And when it rains, when it's... Terry is on the roof and finding problems and fixing them before they develop. But Terry and his crew do a wonderful job at maintaining the city roofs. And I'm proud to know him as an employee and a friend today. He's done a great job.
Congratulations, Terry.
I just want to say thank you, everybody. And I give the honors to God. I'm glad to be a part of this program. I want to say thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
That completes the presentation. Thank you.
Better Vice President concludes the mayor's comments.
Adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on March 25th in Cathedral Square, October 15th in Medal of Honor Park, and October 29th on Calderwood Drive.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience in necessity to David Matthews doing business as Gulf Coast Pedal Tours, LLC to operate a pedal trolley service.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium. And please give us your name and address for the record.
Roy Clark, 1959 Myrtle Avenue. Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Gulf Coast Pedal Tours. For those of you who are unfamiliar with that business, we will be operating a reservation-based 12-seat electric-powered people mover that will take guests around to different sites, bars, restaurants, and more. Be offering two-hour trips primarily in the evenings. But when the weather's nice, we'll be offering afternoon rides on the weekends. Guests can control their own experience by choosing from downtown's many bars, restaurants, and shops. And along the way, we'll be highlighting some of Mobile's more historic and interesting sites. This business and trolley operated and thrived for a year and a half before shutting down when COVID initially ramped up in the spring of 2020. Hasn't run since. And we feel we can offer a fresh, fun, and unique experience to both locals and out-of-town peoples alike while contributing to the dynamic look and feel of Mobile's arts and entertainment district. And that's all I've got for you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Vice President, is this a golf cart that you are going to be operating?
It's essentially an oversized golf cart. It's a long, electric vehicle with six seats on each side. Have pedals. It's a... So people can pedal, but it's also electric, so...
Are these things licensed? Do you have tags? Do you have...
There's no tag, but it's a custom-made vehicle, so there's not a hull or a VIN or any kind of like serial number. But it is, it's got headlights, blinkers, emergency lights, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
What's the maximum speed on the vehicle?
It's got a governor which maxes out at 13 miles per hour.
So it's a low-speed vehicle?
Yes.
You're going to have to adhere to the low-speed vehicle ordinance, meaning you're going to have to get a tag and a thing and everything else that goes with it. But other than that, I don't have a problem with the business. Just make sure you registered the vehicle correctly.
Sure.
Yeah. Ms. Lambert can give you a copy of the city's ordinance so that you know exactly what it is you're expected to do?
Okay.
Anybody?
One further question. What's your area of operation? Is it solely within Hank Aaron Loop, or are you picking up people from their houses? What's your start and stop point?
Initially, we'll be starting at the corner of Conception and Conti, the Merry Widow, the parking lot there, is where we'll be starting. We'll be operating primarily within the entertainment district, just downtown.
Just make sure you follow the low-speed vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
You mentioned that you was in business before COVID. It was in the city of Mobile?
It was. This business and the trolley was, we've taken it over from the previous owners who have moved on to different careers.
Okay. So this is the same vehicle was used?
Exact same vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Public... Oh, are there any other speakers on this particular item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 2657 Hayless Street, 9 1/2 North Cedar Street, 1212 Seneca Street, and 111 South Cody Road, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of these public hearings, please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing as how nobody has come to the podium, we will declare these public hearings closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reverend Cleveland McFarland.
Good morning. Cleveland McFarland, 1525 West Carlyle Drive, of course, in the city of Mobile, Alabama. I stop by records to share with you that some concerns that I've received on annexing. From the very beginning, we talked about annexing. I've just, we already know that even before the census, there was a great push for annexing, even before we knew what was the case. I'm understanding now that we're having private backyard back-office meetings about annexing that I think should be really brought before the community, have community questions asked so that we will know what annexing is all about. I have several questions for annexing. Have we ever discovered why people are leaving Mobile? Have we answered that question? Have we answered the question about the structure and the structure of Mobile that we are suffering now that we haven't addressed? Have we answered the question about the annexing that we've already done of things that we really haven't completed? They're still waiting on us to do things. The strain on the Mobile citizen who chose to be in Mobile and did not leave Mobile for whatever reason. What is the purpose of annexing? Is it because of people, or we're trying to get finance, money from businesses? All of these questions need to be answered and asked in the public. So I'm encouraging our administration and city council, let's talk about this and discuss this in the public, out on the table, and not in back rooms. I'm already suspicious because annexing has been talked about so much even before we did anything. So I want to ask you, let us do this right. I'm not saying I'm against it because I don't have enough information. I'm not saying I'm for it because there is just not enough information. So there's two things that I'm dealing with. Either you have the information and the data and not sharing it with the public, or you don't know what the data and information is, which is even more disturbing. So I'm asking you, let's do this right. If we're going to annex, let us do it outright upfront. Because we're watching, we're waiting, we won't forget, and it won't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Reverend. Since you were here asking about... Since the topic has been brought up, and I know it is a hot topic around the city, I have asked the Chief of Staff if he would like to make some comments in general about where the city is on annexation at this point. So Chief, if you would.
Yeah, Madam Vice President. The administration continues to gather information, answer questions. There are stakeholder meetings that occur. We've certainly met with all the city councils, if not once, twice. We're in the process of updating city council because a lot has changed from the initial look at annexation. But we actually are in agreement with Reverend McFarland that at some point, all of this data, all of this information needs to be put out in public for a transformative transition so that we can get the input from the public. But we're working very diligently to make sure all of the legal requirements are met, all of the questions answered, all of the suggestions are explored before we roll out a public annexation plan.
Madam President? Maybe we should add another stakeholder group to those meetings so that it gives a clear point of transparency. There is a group of pastors that are within the city, some within those annexed areas that might benefit from knowing a little bit of the information on what everybody's been looking at. Maybe we should arrange a meeting of that sort and kind of update them the same way the council's been updated with some of the changes to the annexation. And I, you know, I had a couple of questions myself that I wanted to ask. But one, just to know that stopping the bleeding, I think that's a great question, and somebody needs to ask it or answer it or send information to the administration on how to handle that. And, you know, lastly, transparency, Reverend. It's the intent of this council, especially District 2, and I know 1 and 3, that the process is truly transparent. Right now, I don't even know if we've gotten petitions to come into the city from some of the other areas. I know that there's been a petition coming to the city from one distinct area, but I haven't seen any petitions from anywhere else, and that's been bothering me too. So that needs to be somehow answered, whether or not these areas want to come in, or we're just putting them on that map to see if they want to come in. But we can work our way through that also as we go through the next couple of weeks. Now, we're going to do an annexation attempt. How it's going to look, I don't know. So I can tell you that. We're going to do an annexation attempt. How it's going to look, I don't know. But I know that everyone has been working to try to figure out what's best, what's the best approach for the city and for us moving forward.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Thank you. To answer Reverend McFarland's questions, one, there's no backroom conversations going on from me. I can speak from my office. Everything that I have asked the administration has been public. They are having stakeholder meetings, and I'm sure they're open to have it with any person that's willing to do it. That's a fact. Every council member here had the opportunity to ask any questions. And the goal is to make sure before we come public or they come public or whatever... I say "we" because we represent the city of Mobile, is that all the information is gathered. So if any stakeholder would like to meet, let's meet. But one thing that I'm not going to allow is that people come into the... They say that the city council is a part of doing any backhoe meeting. Everything that we're doing is very transparent. People can ask me any question any day, and I'm going to answer it, give you very truthful response, either you like it or you don't. But if we want to get the things done, we have to be respectful, and we have to be honest. And that's my goal. And that's what I guarantee every person in my district. I want the best. And we not going to do nothing about back in the back room or make... No, this is what we're going to do to move forward. This the need. So to answer your question, one, we already know why people move in automobile. Who don't know it? We don't have no housing. My friends, they leaving and going to these other cities because they can't find a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, double-car garage. They are leaving. They are leaving because there's some things, some resources that we need in District 1. I can't speak for any other district. I don't have no sidewalk in my community. I have to teach my daughter, I have to leave out my house and go to a park far away from my community to teach my daughter how to ride a bike. We know why they leaving. So what we have to do now is take that information now and have a plan of how we're going to utilize it and make sure that people are coming back to Mobile. We know why they leaving. We see things going on in our community, crime. We got to work towards it. It's a fact. If we see these things, we got to put it on the table and say, okay, listen, guys. Hey, we have this issue. We have youth violence. Administration working, they got them a coordinator. Hopefully, this year, we'll see a difference. But if not, guess what? We got to go back to the table and say, okay, look, we need to put a plan in place together. But the only way for that to happen is to do it together. So I don't know if I answered your questions, but I can guarantee you there's no backroom. I want the best from on my end. The second thing, anybody, I encourage anybody in... If you have a group of people, reach out to the Chief of Staff, and I'm sure he'll give you any information that we're talking about, and he can meet with your group. I'm not directing him. Because that's a removable offense. But we have to, we got to get to the place. And I understand Reverend McFarland's concerns because just in the past, we can't forget the past, guys. We, I know we always, we try to think about like what's going on right now, but we can't forget the past that a lot of times in the past, man, our communities didn't get the benefits, they didn't get the things that they deserved. We have state leaders saying crazy remarks right now in the state of Alabama. So don't tell me it don't matter because it does matter. So let's do it together. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
I know I had seen Scott. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple of things haven't been discussed that I think need to be highlighted. Number one, this city council is not voting on the annexation. They have no role to play with West Mobile becoming a part of the city. The city council is only voting for them to have the right to vote and for them to have the opportunity to let their voice be heard, which I heard a lot of people come up to that mic during redistricting saying that's the right thing to do. The second thing is this, there's a lot of legal restrictions once this thing gets to the city council table that the clock starts ticking on and puts us in a position where we have to move very quickly. We, both the city council and the city administration, have got to work together to make sure that we have the right plan in place for the right time to move forward. And that includes the education piece of making sure that people understand what this is. And like my colleagues have stated, this will be a transparent process, guaranteed by this city council. Just as redistricting was, this will be the same thing. But there are very strict timelines. And once this thing gets moving, it's going to move quick by state law. That's not the city administration that's putting that out there. That's not this city council that's putting it out there. So we got to make sure our ducks are in a row before this ever gets to this body. Lastly, I will tell you, there's not any member sitting as a city council representative that this impacts more than me. My district will have the greatest amount of change than any other city council representative sitting in front of me. So I'm absolutely aware of what's going on, the dynamics represented, and how this will impact all districts. Because it will have an impact on all districts. And the data that's been put in front of us right now, that's a positive way. Every one of our districts is going to get a million more dollars that we, we, the city council, get to choose how that's spent. And that's significant. So this thing is moving in the right direction. It is moving the right way. It is moving in a transparent way. And, and like my colleague Cory Penn said, if you're not in the loop and want to be in the loop, ask. And I guarantee you, you'll get the same information that I have or any of my colleagues have. And can that change? Absolutely. It has changed because of these conversations that we've already had. So we're not ready for this to come forward because of these discussions and the concerns that have been addressed on both sides of this aisle, both on the city side and the county side. Because they have a voice too. They're being impacted as well. So we gotta make sure this is right for both groups and this is not an easy process. But I think we're on the right path to move forward in a positive direction to give this city a bright future. And I, I know one thing for sure. If Mobile, the city of Mobile, doesn't annex that area, Sims or Theodore will and our ability to grow is done forever. That's the fact. Sims today is holding meetings on annexation. And I hope when we get into this and it gets to this, this city council, that we'll put some of these things in front of you to show how fast they're annexing. Because I'm the one impacted when I can't grow west and I'm losing my neighbors and my constituents because all the other districts have to grow. And I got nowhere to go. There is no Western movement for District Six, period, without annexation. And I want to grow and I want to see this city grow and I want to see us prosper because the county is growing dramatically. I used to live there for 20 years. And it's there and it's proving that they're continuing to grow and continuing to develop. They're building two new schools out there. That announcement just came two weeks ago, middle school and high school. Why? Because they're growing. They need more room. The growth is west. For all the things that Cory Penn said, bigger houses, larger lots, two-car garage, you can't do that down here. There's no room for it to grow to. So, you know, we're moving in the right direction. We're gonna do it the right way and I think it's gonna be a positive for the city. But at the end, we don't make that decision. People have to vote on it in West Mobile. Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, yeah. Well, I guess Scott and Cory have said quite a bit here, but, uh, let's treat Reverend McFarland's, uh, request as a request for stakeholders for a meeting to be updated on what we have right now. Jim, if we can, let's schedule a date. Let's get their group caught up to where we are in all the other stakeholder conversation we have. Maybe his group has some more questions they might want to ask. Let's get a date scheduled, maybe next week. Let me know what it is, let me know what, what it is. I'll be glad to host it, just like always. And, uh, let's get that out in the open. While we're talking about this, I understand Stand Up Mobile has a meeting on annexation tonight or to talk about it. I'm guessing that they're talking about things that they've heard within meetings that, that have been between the, uh, administration and others. Uh, I'm gonna request that if the administration could send maybe one or two people to that meeting, maybe have some of the current updates with them in case questions are asked, if we need to in the background, answer some of those questions if they're available. So, uh, Reverend, if you could get with me or Jim after this meeting or whenever, and let's find out what date next week. We can show you guys what we've been looking at.
Madam Vice President, just want to bring some clarity to, to my councilman, John. I know you said, um, it's no area. Well, we do have space in District One, um, that, that we can build some three-bedroom and two-car garages. So I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
And we also have them in District Two now, A.F. Owens and Roger Williams and, uh, CJ is gonna have them out at RV Taylor. So let's know that we can grow from within and without at the same time.
All right, anybody else? Appreciate that, appreciate the information. Uh, just keep in mind that of course, what they're telling us is that the information is still preliminary. We have got nothing on our table yet to even discuss or to vote on. Like Scott said, it is not the council who will eventually hopefully have a vote. It will be the people in the areas who, um, are allowed to vote on whether they would like to come into the city. And of course, that's a big if. If they are given the right to vote and if they do vote to come in, then we will see changes in the city, but not until... Anybody else? All right, Ms. Lambert.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I rise today to address, uh, budgeting matters pertaining to public safety and Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code. Before I begin, well, actually as I begin, I want to take the time to commend the City Clerk's office and for the value and professionalism that is within that office, the transparency that comes from that office and for them preparing all of the things that are necessary for this city to conduct business. And as I listened to comments this morning, it just took me aback because for months, years even, we have been submitting the proper documentation to every proper person in control of this city. And yet we have not had responses, even particularly to Chapter 38, which we're getting in. We can ask Madam Assistant City Clerk, this was in January or February, that these documents were sent, specific details, and we have had nothing returned. There has been no response. So I, I, it's just, it, it was just off to me that those type of comments were rendered. So I wanted to take my time, because you know we only have 180 seconds up here, to commend the City Clerk's office and the professionalism that they do week after week. Now, to make this very simple, so we don't have to go long into detail, let's just look at item 08875, where we're spending nearly $350,000 for yet again some more vehicles. That's a budget amendment. Have to go no long details and outlines and three-page essays. 08875, amend that. We don't have anything on the books now dealing with the vehicles to give us concise understanding of what's in the motor pool. We say we don't have the money to invest in the proactive organizations who actually have the data-proofing results to fix this stuff, but I'm looking at $350,000 right now. This would not hurt us. It would not hurt us to lose out on purchasing eight new vehicles. And this is not chastising to public safety. When the razors were initially put in, and you can check with the City Clerk's office with this as well, there was one citizen who didn't work for the city that came out here and spoke up for the police getting the razors and you looking at them. So the idea of us not having the resources or this being off the wall is unfounded. We have the money. Chapter 38, last week I was able to help a, a citizen, uh, resolve a court issue matter. This is something that's been consistent with success for the future. We do this quite often. I'd like to see what we can allow nonprofit organizations to work directly with the court so we can stop the recidivism, so we actually see what issues are being done in our city and in a proactive fashion prevent them. We are wasting beaucoup dollars, week after week after week, month after month, year after year, instead of investing in things that actually work. So I couldn't get into the details fully today because of the matter of what we had to address. But as before, I present and then I submit the form of writing. So hopefully you'll give a response this time. Thank you for your on the floor.
Madam Vice President.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Um, to Reggie's point, I don't know all the different things that you submitted even before I got in office, but I, I think it's fair for any constituent or any resident who has a concern that submitted, that we try to get an answer, some type of response. If, I don't know all of it, but, um, if we can, can get some type of response to all the things that, that Mr. Hill stated in prior past, that would be great. You know, even if we don't have all the answers, at least respond to, to the, the questions that he might have. That's just a request, it's not a, you know, command. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, yeah, I just got a question for the administration. What's the impact of those eight vehicles if you didn't receive those eight vehicles?
Back in 2014, the city embarked on a journey to turn over its fleet. And at the time, they set aside 3.2 million to turn over its fleet annually so that we could purchase approximately 100 vehicles annually. That buying power today is not the same as it was in 2014. To take away that 300,000 continues to diminish the buying power that we have to turn over our fleet in a timely manner as we've worked with Public Works to, to make sure that we, we meet that goal annually.
Thank you. And we've, we've heard that numerous times in, in pre-council meeting when we've asked that question. I just want to make sure that the public understands that as well. Lastly, you know, you mentioned putting things that work. I gotta believe our public safety department's doing that. When you look at the reduction in crime this year, is it still there? Yes, but what, what's our numbers at this point this year?
In, in, in particularly in the area of, of violent crime, which is what we typically get up in arms about, we are currently spending, experiencing about a 12% uh, reduction overall in Part One crime in relation to violent crime. You know, it's, um, the programs that we, we have in place, uh, uh, they are working. When we saw the uptake, we were dealing with a national trend. But in the Mobile area, we have, uh, we have made some adjustments and we are currently seeing some decline in those areas. Again, we continue to try to make adjustments as we see, uh, the community change and we're making sure that we get out in the community and do the things that are necessary. To speak to, uh, another point, uh, Mr. Hill has had numerous meetings with me to discuss his concerns about public safety and other areas, and I've always been open and transparent with him, uh, when it comes to those issues. So to, to say that he doesn't get information in particularly in the area of public safety, I can't speak for any other department, but I've eaten lunch with Mr. Mr. Hill. Uh, I've never, uh, not had a conversation with him as it, as it relates to pu- uh, public safety and the things that we're doing as a police chief and as the public safety director.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Ordinance is held over. 01043, ordinance to define the city of Mobile Central Business District.
Motion to...
Motion to layover until November 1st.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
64046, rezoned property located at 712 716 and 718 Dolphin Island Parkway from R3 and B3 to R3.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions held over. 40660, declare the structure at 753 Rebecca Drive, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to table.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
40586, declare the structure at 1101 South Broad Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to layover one week?
Um, no.
CJ said it was okay.
He said it was okay.
Okay. So look. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Did we vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over. 01872, authorize agreement with Telepac Networks for McGregor Avenue widening. 08874, approved purchase order to train US Inc. for air conditioning, condensing, and air handling units for Spring Hill Rec Center. 08875, approved purchase order to Stivers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram for eight Dodge Durango Patrol Vehicles. 08876, approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales for Digger Derrick Truck Traffic Engineering. 08877, approved purchase order to Quick Buildings LLC for roof, ceiling, window, and floor upgrades Fire Department Drill Center. 21878, authorized contract with John G. Walton Construction Company for 2018 Pago North McGregor Avenue Reconstruction. 21879, approved contract with Jenny Brown for Court Reporting Services. 37881, approved certificate of public convenience and necessity to Dog Team Petty Cab for, to operate a petty cab service. 6882, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, 31885 through 37909.
Move to ready the rules for immediate consideration itself for 37891, to layover one week.
Second.
Um, no. Uh, I need you to take 40895 separate.
Can we include that in the exception, Lisa?
Oh, you want to lay that over a week?
No, it's gonna be laid over 60 days.
Oh, okay, sure, okay.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
31885, authorized grant application with State Farm for Good Neighborhood Citizenship Grant to assist MPD's bridging gap program, no local match. 37886, 887, 888, 889, 890, 892, 893. Our recommended approvals of the ABC Board's Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Lit Cigar Lounge, uh, on October 15th, um, November the 12th, December 10th, um, December the 2nd, and to, for a special events retail liquor license to Ronald McDonald House Charities of Mobile for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Gulf Coast LLC on April Boulevard, and for issuance of a special retail more than 30 days license, Fuse Kitchen on, on Galliard Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Oh, aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't think of that. So anyway, um, 40894, declare the structure at 2657 Hayler Street. 40896, declare the structure at 1212 Seneca Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished. 40897, declare the structure at 111 South Cody Road, a public nuisance, order it demolished. 6898, 899, and 900. Our approval award a special bonus to the Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month to the Park Public Works at Large Employee of the Month and Public Services Employee of the Month. 60901, determine an appropriation to Combeville, Brighton Community Development Corporation serves a public purpose and approve payment. 03908, appoint Eric Peoples to the Advisory Commission on the Disabled. And 37909, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Tim Manus, Mobile Historic Development Commission, Spanish Plaza.
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to thank Mr. Peoples for, uh, volunteering to serve on the Advisory Commission on the Disabled. He is the new director of the Independent Living Center. So he will be a very valuable member of this board and I appreciate his willingness to serve. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
40895, declare the structure at 9 and 1/2 North Cedar Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to, uh, layover 60 days.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, Miss President, I mean, uh, Miss Vice President. Uh, in between count, pre-council and council meeting, it was discovered the owner has hired a structural engineer to evaluate the property and the walls. Uh, upon evaluation, the owner's intent is to repair the walls. The 60 days will give the owner the time necessary to, uh, get, uh, the progress going and the city value, see that the progress is moving. And then at that time, if everything's going well, then we will table this item.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21902.
My council rules this item will layover one week.
Resolutions being introduced, 13903 through 37907.
By council rule, this res- these resolutions will be held over one week.
Call for public hearings, 41910, call for public hearing to consider ordinance to amend proposed amendment to Section 64.3.0i Downtown Development District of the current zoning ordinance, Chapter 60. Section 64.3. I Downtown Development District of the current zoning ordinance, Chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code, 1991, and proposed amendment to Appendix A Downtown Development Code, Chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code, 2022, scheduled November 22nd.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in, uh, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, this, we discussed in pre-council, this would be held in conjunction with the other, um, amendment on the 15th. But due to the timeline of having to have this amendment prepared by, um, Thursday at 1700, we were just not able to get that, um, moved forward in time. Um, so what this allows us to do by pushing it one week is to get the amendment on the table in front of all the stakeholders so you can have a look at the amendment, make any comment, and we can revise that before we go final, um, next week. So, we still have the timelines needed legally, um, for this public hearing to have the amendments posted. So, that, that's the reason for the delay. Um, and, and I am confident that this will get us where we need to be to get everything moving forward, um, that the mayor wants and the city council wants, as well as the other stakeholders, um, in, in the Downtown Development District and those that live down near the Civic Center. So, I'm excited about that. Um, William Carroll and his group have, have put a lot of work into this. Um, I appreciate them working together and collaborating to get us to a solution that I think moves this city forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements, the city council meeting next Tuesday, uh, will be held on Wednesday, October the 19th. Same time.
Right. Um, other announcements, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, yes, Madam Vice President, I want to announce to the Cypress Shores community that on Oc- October 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00, there will be a community meeting regarding the, uh, efforts to redesign the stormwater ditches throughout the community. Uh, it will be held at Cypress Shores Baptist Church. I hope everyone that's listening comes out and attends and gives their input and feedback to the process going forward. This is a, uh, a big project, a, a big deal for the community, and your input is vital to its success. Thank you.
Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We will have our tight event, um, committee meeting on October the 25th, right after council meeting. Um, also want to give a big shout out to Parks and Rec this past weekend. I had a great time at Tomaville at, um, the Figures Community Center for Family Fun Day. And then we also had Kids Day at Sage Park that morning. It was so many kids out there, so many families. Uh, we had a great time this past weekend. Also, this Thursday, um, I'm calling it the Battle of District One, Scarborough versus Boogaty. Both teams are undefeated. We will be in the Tomaville community at Boogaty. I attended Scarborough Model Middle School. My wife went to Boogaty. It was the Battle of District One. Two houses divide, man, it doesn't matter. Whoever wins, they, they are part of District One. So, we're excited and, um, come out and fellowship with us this Thursday at 5:00 PM for the Battle of District One, Boogaty versus Scarborough Middle School.
Mr. Carroll?
My bet is on Mrs. Penn. Um, last month, the city initiated a texting service to receive information from the city on a regular basis and also member, uh, information from council members. If you are in District Two and you're interested in getting text messages from, uh, the District Two seat as opposed to the, uh, Councilman Carroll's text service things that we've been using in the past, uh, if you are a part of that, please text, start by texting, mobileCD2 to 91896. That's mobileCD2 to 91896. Legally, we cannot add you to the texting service unless you request it. So, if you received texts from me in the past, please, again, please subscribe to this service by text, by texting first, mobileCD2 to 91896. Thank you, Miss Pre, um, Ms. Vice.
All right, uh, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, a couple of things. First and foremost, uh, uh, thanks to traffic engineering and Public Works. Um, I don't know what's going on, but I've heard a, a ton of compliments on timely calls, um, from 311 calls that have gone forward in getting things resolved. So, I don't know why we're getting things quickly like we are, but it's a great news story and a lot of things go out to the departments that are making that happen. Um, let's, let's keep that going because it, it is great to hear all the compliments coming in, uh, for the city and, and what we're doing to help folks out. Um, it is our homecoming for the Jags this weekend. Four and one, um, they've got a great weekend playing the game six o'clock on Saturday night. Would love to see everybody there and pack that out. Um, and then lastly, Pinehurst, we're going to have a meeting for that neighborhood community on, um, the 25th. And I'm looking at a district meeting on the 27th of this month at the Connie Hudson Center. So, we'll, we'll get the, those things finalized and, and, uh, put out for the folks to attend those meetings. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Just a few things coming from, uh, District Seven. I want to also thank Public Works, especially the mowing department. I've sent in my thanks, um, to Shonda Smith, but, um, a couple of areas in my district that are very difficult to get to, like Ziegler Boulevard where the widening project is underway, as well as Cody Road, um, have been mowed, they have been trimmed. It is amazing to see the work that they are doing, and I am so appreciative, and the residents are as well. It really looks great, Jim. Please pass on to everybody how much we appreciate their hard work and what they're doing. Uh, I also want to let everybody know, if you haven't seen it yet, the city is doing a promotion about house numbers. Uh, it may not mean much to you, but it means a lot to emergency responders when they are trying to find your house, especially if someone is having a heart attack and you don't have a house number visible anywhere. Uh, time is of the essence. The city has an ordinance requiring every building to have a house number or building number that is visible. So, please, everyone, pass the word around to all of your community action groups, homeowners associations, uh, to let people know that house numbers are required, and you certainly want them there, not only for emergency responders, but look at all of the other things that are delivered to your homes. So, please get those, um, posted. Also, the city, at my request as well, is doing something on garbage cans. We've had a lot of wind lately and people have put their garbage cans out. They may be a little over full. The wind has knocked the tops off and therefore garbage has strewn on the streets. So, please, if you need a second garbage can, you can purchase one. All you have to do is call 311. If you have an issue where the garbage can has been damaged at no fault of your own, the city makes repairs on these. So, if the wheel is missing for whatever reason, if the top has come off and it's not your fault, please call 311 and the city will make repairs, uh, to your garbage can. Also, just want to remind everybody that the fair is coming up, which means there will be a whole lot of traffic on Cody Road and Ziegler Boulevard at the end of the month. I've spoken with Chief Prine, and I know he's working with the traffic department to make sure that there is a good plan in place, especially with the Ziegler widening project. We're already having to detour cars. The last thing we need is a lot of fair traffic coming in on those service roads and blocking things. It's just not fair to the people who live there, so we're trying to come up with some other routes, some other entrances to the fairgrounds in order to alleviate some of those problems. And I do want to just reiterate what the chief was talking about with the, uh, Mobile Fire Rescue Department. The expo is, uh, Friday, Friday from 9:00 until 1:00 at Langen Park. Please come out. A lot of great, um, things that you'll be able to see, from rope propelling to, uh, house burn simulations, uh, and how the fire department is able to extract people out of wrecked vehicles. So, again, from 9:00 until 1:00 this Friday at Langen Park. Come on out and enjoy. Anybody from the administration? Any announcements? Chief?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, with that, I-